Absolutely. Good afternoon. Mr. Bailey?
Present.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Herbert?
Dr. Bustles?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Present.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
I hear you very much. Could everybody possibly stand to the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend McDowell, would you do us the honor, please?
Let us pray. For all that you've done for us, for the blessings you bestowed upon each and every one of us, for the prosperity of this city and those who dwell therein, for all of the things and all of the accomplishments we've done and tried to foster within this city of ours, we simply say thank you. Allow us and yet give us the opportunity to bridge the gap, to touch, to innovate, and to give us the experience that is needed for vibrant growth within our city. Touch us, touch the leadership, and touch every person in this city of ours. We claim it and ask it in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend McDowell.
Thanks, sir.
Madam City Mayor?
Yes, sir. At this time, Mr. Mayor and Council, we would ask for the adoption of the agenda with the addition of one executive session item. That is just a moment. I'm sorry, I can...
Page center contract?
Yes.
Motion to approve the, adopt the agenda?
Second.
With the added executive session item?
Yes.
Is there any questions or concerns hearing none seen them? Madam Clark, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms., Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
And, Mr. Mayor, I would add that at the appropriate time, you all will take up the issues from the work session to address the special revenue funded items that you all discussed. Thank you. At this time, any individuals who would like to speak are allotted up to three minutes to address City Council about items on the agenda. The items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time.
Mayor, we do not have any individuals that are signed up to speak at this time. They're signed up for items later on the agenda.
Right, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
The approval of minutes. Item number one, Council has asked to approve the June 4, 2024, City Council meeting minutes.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions, changes? Usually not with our efficiency of our great clerk's office. We get it down right here first time. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
For that, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving into a period of presentations, the first, item number two, the Lula Drake Wine Parlor Day Proclamation, the Honorable Daniel J. Rickaman Mayor.
Are our folks here? Where is everybody? Come on up to the podium. Let everybody see you. First of all, you know, we want to take a minute to honor you because, you know, being the first restaurant in Columbia, South Carolina, to get a James Beard Award is an incredible honor. For a food crazed fool like me, it's incredible because we've had a lot of firsts in the city of Columbia. And this is another one, really excited. So if you'll bear with me, I'd like to read the proclamation and then I would love for you to talk about the experience you and your employees had. Lula Drake Wine Parlor is recognized as the 2024 James Beard Award recipient for outstanding hospitality. Hear that now? Outstanding hospitality and outstanding wine and other beverage program category. Lula Drake is the first restaurant in the city of Columbia to be honored with the prestige's James Beard Award, referred to the Oscar of the food world. Lula Drake has become beloved with its wines, distinctive menu, inviting service, and vintage setting after being open in Columbia's Main Street for eight years. The parlor elevates Columbia's hospitality scene, attracting local visitors alike to indulge in their carefully created food and beverage. Tim Gardner, owner of Lula Drake and Colombian Navy sets the native, sets the high standards with his culinary and curation skills, leadership ability, and efforts to create a sustainable work culture in the capital city. Lula Drake believes Columbia and the contributing positive to the community by bringing a unique concept to diversity and build on Columbia's growing culinary scene on Historic Main Street. So therefore, I, Daniel J. Rickaman, the Mayor of Columbia, South Carolina, along with these fellow members of City Council, do hereby proclaim June 18, 2024, as Lula Drake Wine Parlor Day. And I just want to say congratulations. And I want to tell you what a big deal this was, is I have a friend who works in the Michelin star community, and she was the first person to text me. Because she was at the event and she goes, "Your hometown looks very, very proud."
Thank you. Thanks so much. I can tell you this, we were ecstatic to represent the city. Something like this is not something you can obviously have ever planned for. And we were, we had an amazing time in Chicago. Everybody was asking us about Columbia. I think we're going to see a pretty large impact from it.
As well, we're already getting guests from all over the country. So it's an honor and it's, I see so many people in here today that I see as customers at Lula Drake. So it's always, it's always great to see familiar faces and new ones as well. So thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. It's always great to celebrate something like that. And what will be interesting is we watch as folks come from everywhere to experience Lula Drake right in downtown Columbia.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and congratulations again. Item number three is a presentation by Mr. Darren Thomas, the President of the South Carolina Black Pages with the 2024 Columbia Black Expo update.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you once again for giving me this opportunity. And very briefly, I'm here today just to give you a recap on the 2024 Columbia Black Expo, which was held May 16 through the 18th. Very grateful for the Councilman and Mayor, you and your family for coming out and to be a part of this very special event. Let me also mention that each of you should have an executive summary giving you details, our data collected. Historically, we've always collected data so that we understand our best practices as we continue to move this event forward. I'll also ask Council to be mindful that Black Expo is, has the responsibility with utilizing hospitality tax funds of drawing outside visitors, but we also have an economic development aspect to the event, that there's a responsibility and an expectation that we would use this event to assist and help all businesses, particularly those from the communities of color. Here's why this year was very special for us. We moved the expo to several venues. The first time we, the Taste of Black Columbia had been downtown at the Columbia Museum of Art. Our partnership with the South Carolina Department of Agriculture went extremely well. We received high marks, taught with Della, members of the Columbia Museum Board, who were excited and ecstatic, as well as the University of South Carolina, Dr. Bobby Donaldson in the Center for Social Justice. That display did wonders and worked wonders for that event in particular. Specifically, on Saturday, Mr. Mayor, Council, you know, we've struggled in the evolution of Black Expo from the colonial, well, from the Colosseum to the Colonial Life Arena to the Convention Center. We made the very difficult decision to move the expo to the fairgrounds this year, particularly because of the feedback we had received from elderly individuals, mothers with strollers, and the challenges with space. I will tell you, we specifically asked the question for our attendees this year. What was it that drove them, their attendance, by the way, our expo attendance was 8,128. We were up 20% over the previous year with out-of-state attendance. Our highest location out-of-state was Charlotte, followed by Durham, North Carolina. Here's what attendees told us. Moving to the fairgrounds afforded them the opportunity to park with ease and move in one space, one contiguous space. Having hosted this event in Florida, Charleston, and other markets, our struggle has always been trying to make certain we mirror that same feel. That has been a challenge for us in the past. And I have a responsibility to you as Council just to share that data and tell you what our attendees have said. And the question we asked, which was, okay, based on your previous Black Expo experience for previous attendees, and 80% gave us, said they preferred the location, which we believe was as a direct result of the ease of moving about in that venue. Our exhibitors, our sponsors, our attendees, all said pretty much the same thing. We recognize, again, our responsibility. We welcome how we look at every aspect of growing this in the future. I'll always be open to Council's feedback. And we're grateful for what has been afforded us. But again, my purpose was to come back before you today and just share the data. I won't inundate you with what's already been written in the executive summary. But again, I just want to say to Council, thank you for believing us. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to restructure and grow this event. And we hope and pray in the future we'll be able to be beneficial again to all citizens.
Yeah, did you want to say something?
Yeah.
Microphone.
Brother Darren. Brother Darren, we want to, this city of ours is, we're indebted to you and your vision for Black Expo and what takes place on Friday night.
Yes, sir.
During the Taste of, during the Taste. Thank you for your vision. Thank you for all that you do in this city of ours to make this a community of diversity and inclusivity.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to your staff.
Yes, sir.
And particularly, thank you so much for the cuisine that was given to us on Friday, that Friday night.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
I just wanted to piggyback on Rev's comments. Very much enjoyed the new venue, the Taste of Black Columbia, the ambiance, the food was incredible. One small piece of feedback I would suggest, there were a lot of young friends of mine that couldn't make it because it was the same night as the Clyburn Fish Fry. And I think that there was a missed opportunity there for us to be able to capture some of those folks that are also very politically engaged. And I hope that we can try as much as possible to coordinate so that doesn't happen because I would have loved to see some of my other friends be able to come and enjoy the bread pudding and the pibachi and all the great things y'all had.
Councilman Bustles, we totally missed that, quite honestly. And it wasn't until that night of when someone made mention that they were leaving the Fish Fry, coming over to the, to the Taste. And in the past 18 years of hosting the Taste, we'd never had that conflict, never. So it's something for us to, in going, moving forward, to look at how we manage that. And by the way, let me say before Council, City Manager Theresa Wilson was incredibly helpful in getting, helping us navigate the street closures. But Harold Reeves and the city of Columbia, they were awesome, great to work with, made that entire experience easy for us to navigate. And it takes that kind of effort to pull off an event of this magnitude.
That's great to hear.
Mr. Thomas, unlike my colleague, I liked that all those people were at the Fish Fry because there was more Gichi rolls for me and a whole lot of other items that I went through several times.
Absolutely.
The food was incredible.
Yes, sir.
But what was fun, really exciting about it is that everybody was having a really good time.
Yeah.
And the interaction, I met so many people that I had not met before, some recent grads, parents, different folks. I thought the event was fantastic. We had a great time as a family there. And Saturday was especially, it was, I think you're right, the venue made it real easy because I did hear the same comment from a lot of, and when I look at the demographics of your event, you know, you do, you have 30% are older folks.
Absolutely.
And I heard them say, "This is much easier for me to get around." And I think they spent more time engaging.
That was another thing, yep.
With the people at the booths, you know. So, look, we look forward to continued relationship. It was a great event, like I said. Had an opportunity to drive the electric vehicle, which was fun.
Absolutely.
Wouldn't have been able to do that at the Convention Center, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
But, you know, meeting the folks there, and I'll tell you, Chef Roy and all the chefs there did such an incredible job. It was really a great event. Thank you.
Absolutely. And again, one last shout out to the Office of Business Opportunities. The staff did an incredible job with the workshop that morning, so I'd be remiss if I didn't thank the staff because again...
Staff, you hear? Raise your hand.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, but again, Council, Mr. Mayor, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We will move into the very important Budget Ordinance Second Reading, item number four, Ordinance Number 2024-043, to raise revenue and adopt the budget for the city of Columbia, South Carolina, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none seen them, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Can we move forward at this time, appropriate for hospitality?
Yes, sir, if you would like to take up your special revenues at this time.
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to start with Hospitality 2425 Tax Request from our committee. We are accepting the committee's recommendations with the following changes. Item seven, Black Pages International, move that to 125. Captain's Hope is to 20,000. The Columbia International Festival to 150. Holidays for the Home Tour to 6,000. Divine Street Association to 60,000. First Thursday on Main to 30,000. The Five Points Association to 525. We have the removal of item 45 and 54. And that's all the recommended changes on the committee structure. So we'll take that item first and then do line item agencies, is that a thing? So that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussions, questions? Hearing none seen them, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the committee's probably trying to do math in their head. I'll just let you know, we added some money to the pot.
And thank you for the committee being here tonight and for your service. We appreciate all the work that you do.
As we go to hospitality requests for our line item agencies, these are agencies that the city's involved with. Line item one, Council's recommendation for Columbia Museum of Art is $1 million. The Columbia Music Festival Association is $260,000. Adventure is $500,000. Historic Columbia SC 63, $225,000. Historic Columbia, Historic Columbia, $775,000. One Columbia for Arts and History, $100,000. Some motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none seen them, Madam Clerk, read the roll.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye. Next is our 2425 State Accommodations Tax Request. The Council approves as recommended from the committee. Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, hearing none, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye. Next would be our special requests and strategic initiatives. Ready?
Yes.
Okay. I'm just going to read it. Three Rivers Music Festival, we're going to hold 500,000 for further review. Town Theater Capital Request.
For the music festival that is contingent upon further discussion?
We're going to go ahead and reserve the funding.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, sir. 100,000 for Town Theater Capital Request. 100,000 for Musical Festival Association Capital Request. 125 for Historic Columbia's Community Engagement Center. 100,000 for the riverfront marketing. 25,000 for feasibility study for the Aquatic Center. Silicon South would be 500,000 towards capital reserved. And that would be over, and there'll be a request to extend that over four years depending on, obviously, making all the requirements for that reservation, so it'd be a total of 2 million over four years. Christmas lights and decorations for city, 50,000. City Center Partnership Clean and Safe, Elmwood Corridor and North Main District, 100,000. CCN Request for Assistance with Strategic Plan and Initiatives and Operational Costs, 12,000. Love Your Brock Grant, 34,000 for, so it will be a total of 50,000 available to our communities. That includes 16,000 from the community development budget, so 34 from here. Columbia Arts and Stream Neighborhood Art, Parks and Recs Foundation, 100. City Marketing and Branding Initiative, 450. And then Barricades, Bollards, and Bike Racks, 250,000. All of those are coming from staff recommended sources. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Yes.
I think for CCP, I'm sorry, is it up to 100,000, correct?
I'm sorry, you're correct. It's up to 100. So I will amend my motion to include up to 100,000.
And then for Three Rivers, is it 600,000 reserved, depending upon further explanations and working through the different items that were discussed today?
Okay.
Thank you. I know you mentioned the 500, but I think we're looking at another source, 100,000, so 600.
So I'll amend to add 600 in reserve.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
The 500,000 for the barriers?
250. Yes, sir. 250, yeah.
Yep, 250.
250, yes.
I will second the motion the mayor made for the special project revenues.
Is there any further discussion, questions? Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council and City Manager.
Thank you, Ms. E, for all your hard work. Thank you, Council. Appreciate, appreciate your hard work. And yes, and of course, the staff, Ms. E and staff and Jeff.
Yeah, thank you all very much. We've had a lot of meetings about budget throughout this spring to prepare for today. Really happy where we are and where we're going. So this is exciting. Next step.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we can take up your consent agenda items five through 29. If you all, or whenever you all are ready, Mr. Mayor.
So we have consent agenda items. Now, folks, there's a lot of items on here, but since we are not meeting till July 18th, we have some contracts that will take place and start in July 1 that we need to go ahead and address. So when you see this thick stack in here, you understand what we're doing.
Any questions, Mr. Mayor and Council, for these consent agenda items? I know it is a lot. Thank you, Mayor, for making that point. We do try to bring, once you approve your budget on this agenda each year, the second reading's given. We do like to go ahead and get as many contractual items so there's not a lapse in those contracts beginning as of July 1.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, Madam Clerk? Could you read the roll? That's item five through 29.
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if I can get you through all the pages, our public hearing and first reading for zoning planning matters will begin with item 30, an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 517 Hampton Trace Lane. And Ms. Hampton is available to take us through these items.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Yes, good evening. The first item on your agenda is an annexation, future land use map amendment and zoning map amendment for 517 Hampton Trace Lane. And the proposal is to request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of urban edge residential small lot, and a zoning of residential single-family medium lot. Looks like we have, there we go, Hampton Trace.
You got it?
That's it.
Yep. Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item? Councilman?
Mr. Mayor, I do want to just make one note. Ms. Wilson and I...
Yes, sir.
Request Andrew get feedback from this property owner because they came to us to get annexed into this small donut hole behind the VA. So very curious to find out why and to see if we can't roll that into other messaging to the rest of that small donut hole behind the VA. But with that, I make a motion to approve.
Got a motion? A second? Any further discussion? Do you want Andrew to come now before we vote? Okay. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
I will take the opportunity to plug what I'm sure he would offer is that for most residential properties, it is a benefit to the homeowner to annex into the city financially in addition to the most fabulous services that we provide, so.
And code enforcement, code enforcement as well.
That's one of our fabulous services, solid waste code enforcement, you name it, we've got it. So highly recommend it. So moving on now to item 31, which is another annexation of a larger parcel for 15.98 acres on the northeast side of Old Percival Road and 8441 Old Percival. on the northeast side of Old Percival Road and 8441 Old Percival Road, and 1.5 acres on the south side. It's a request to annex the property, assign a land use classification of urban edge residential small lot, and a zoning of residential single-family small lot.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item?
We have a gentleman by the name of Josh who signed up to speak.
Morning, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, Council. My name is Josh Raven with Civil Engineer in Columbia. I represent PC Land Development on this project. Looking at bringing this into the city and developing it as a single-family residential neighborhood, looking at 110 units with a price range somewhere in the 280 to 320 range. Working with the South Carolina Parks to the north to have a verbal agreement in principle for a water easement, working with city staff on looping the water back in to meet the city water requirements. And the zoning that we're requesting RSF3 is consistent with what's directly across the street already within the city. So just wanted to kinda give you a little outline of what we were proposing to do in there and answer any questions you may have.
Council, have any questions? Mr. Brennan, that's your district.
It's my district.
No, it's Pierce.
Motion to approve.
Sorry about that. It used to be Will's district.
Things change.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Thank you. Your next two items are to add properties as landmarks. The first is at 1100 Courtright Street. It's a request to rezone the property from Community Activity Center in the North Main Corridor overlay. And it is to add the OVHP Individual Landmark designation. And so this is a map and a text amendment to add this to our landmark. Just let me navigate. There we are. I'll get you a image. So this is one of our mid-century modern structures that is being added to the list.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item? It is a zoning hearing matter. Seeing none, hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second from our at-large members. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
And finally, an amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance to include 1800 Senate Street, to include the property as a type 3 landmark.
Is there anybody here to speak for or against this item?
Motion to approve.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing unseen, no further discussion. Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Thank you.
That concludes your zoning public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Hampton.
Ordinance is first reading, item 34, ordinance number 2024-034, granting an encroachment to Columbia Canopy Project for the use of the right-of-way area of the 4500 block of Windonier Avenue for the installation and maintenance of one bench adjacent to 4503.
It's got a motion and a second.
We get a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Got a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye. I'm just holding it down today.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item 35, ordinance number 2024-035, granting an encroachment to Cotton Town Bellevue Historic District Neighborhood Association for the use of the right-of-way areas of the 2100 block of Sumter Street, the 1200 and 1400 blocks of Confederate Avenue, and the 1400 block of Victoria Street for the installation and maintenance.
Got a motion and a second. Denise, if you're listening on your vacation, we're approving it. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. McDowell, I'm sorry. Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Thank you.
Resolutions, item 36, resolution number R2024-039, authorizing the city manager to execute a lease agreement with Mary Hammond Center LLC for the lease of Suite 110 and Suite 112, 2012 Harden Street for the Employee Health Center.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Thank you.
Item 37, resolution number R2024-047, authorizing an addendum to employer resolution for participation in the state insurance benefits program regarding county municipality council member cover.
So move.
Got a motion, is there a second? A motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Item 38, resolution number R2024-043, authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding between the City of Columbia and the Common in connection with Rapid Shelter Overflow Program for fiscal year 2024.
Got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Oh, can we discussion real quick?
Yep.
So for the purposes of the public, the next several items continue to be the city's investment from general funds and other sources towards addressing homelessness. And that investment has increased over time as we are continuing to see so much success with Rapid Shelter and are continuing to move clients and folks living there into permanent housing. But that being said, we still continue to see a gap in terms of being able to have funding opportunities from, you know, organizations like the MOC and the federal level. And so we just, I just really wanted the public to know that despite some of these barriers, we continue to invest our, you know, precious budget dollars to make sure that our communities have what they need.
Thank you, Dr. Bustles. Any further comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanna echo that. A lot of feedback from last night's info session on what the city is doing for homelessness was the fact that most citizens don't know that the MOC consists of 13 counties. And a lot of those folks in need end up here in Columbia for those services that our service providers and the city provide. So as we move forward in this conversation about homelessness, I want it to be known the entity of MOC, what it consists of, the funding, the amount it is funded to, and how they need to work with the City of Columbia. So we've, we've been trying. So I hope those pursuits go somewhere soon, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. As you know, we, we were in Washington together talking with HUD about the fact that, that our MOC is not only too large of an area, it's outdated, and the funding source is significantly less than what other states and other areas get. So we're constantly fighting for our case in Washington.
And I would just add, the MOC is the Midlands Area Coalition on Homelessness. That is what really holds the purse strings for all of the federal funding that's received. And currently, as it stands, the city is not a partner in that work. And I hope that this really sheds light for the public in terms of how we're still looking for creative ways to continue to fund some of the great work that our team is doing.
Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, each of you, for those comments.
Was there a vote?
Yes.
We need to read the roll. Okay. Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Item 39, resolution number R2024-045, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for professional services between the City of Columbia and the Salvation Army.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Item 40, resolution number R2024-046, authorizing the city manager to execute a professional services agreement for the Housing First Program between the City of Columbia and the University of South Carolina for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'm curious, isn't this like our 20th year in this contract or longer?
It's been a long time. I'd have to look to see how many years though, Mayor, but you're right, it's been a very long partnership.
Yep. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Item 41, resolution number R2024-048, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the City of Columbia and the Midlands Housing Alliance, Inc.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Item 42, resolution number R2024-049, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for professional services between the City of Columbia and the Midlands Housing Alliance, Inc., for Rapid Shelter Columbia and Rapid Shelter Columbia Overflow.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Item 43, resolution number R2024-050, authorizing the city manager to execute a contract for professional services between the City of Columbia and the Courage Center for the opioid program for fiscal year 2024-2025.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. I will say that I'm excited about this contract. I know Dr. Bustles is a vice chair over the committee, the opioid program, but the Courage Center has moved into our city limits. And they're probably, they're really an incredible group that does some amazing work in the recovery space. I went to see their first location out in Lexington, and I was really, really impressed. I'm excited, and they wanna do more things with us, and so I look forward to the future. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
One thing to add, I'm excited as well, and a friend of mine actually lost his life to a fentanyl misuse overdose around the corner for what the Courage Center is. So I'm encouraged to see this center in that area hopefully help save some lives.
Yeah. That's, thank you for letting us know. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Well, again, thank you, Mayor and Council, for considering those series of contracts. And I wanted to say thank you to our homeless services director, Kamisha Hepard, for diligently administering these contracts and doing the hard work.
Absolutely.
Item 44, under event resolutions is the resolution number R2024-030, authorizing consumption of beer, wine, and liquor at 5:00 after 5:00, the Free Concert Series at the perimeter of the fountain and loading zone between 737 Harden Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor recommend.
Aye.
Item 45, resolution number R2024-034, authorizing consumption of beer, wine, and liquor at the Palmetto Tasty Tomato Festival in the 1600 block of Blandy Street.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Other than I look forward to seeing everybody there on a cool July afternoon. Luckily, they're gonna have cold beer with that tomato. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Dr. Bustles.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Moving into a period of appointments, items forty-six through forty-eight, Design Development Review Commission, the Minority Business Advisory Council, and the Planning Commission, the Richmond-Letson Airport District Commission is deferred.
Mr. Mayor, for the Design and Development Review Commission, I'd like to put forward the following slate. For the architect role, Mr. Hunter McKenzie, who would be relieving Bob Broome. For the realtor, Megan Thomas. For the community representatives, Emily Gallo and Josh Shelton.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, for the Minority Business Advisory Council, we'd like to reappoint the existing committee, which consists of Mr. Jimmy Chow, Mrs. Karen Jenkins, Mr. Anthony Lawrence, Mrs. Cheryl Sally, and Mr. Ronald Taylor.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Yeah, Mr. Jimmy Chow, Mrs. Karen Jenkins, Mr. Anthony Lawrence, Mrs. Cheryl Sally, and Mr. Ronald Taylor.
We got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing done, seeing none. And if there is somebody else who would like to join that, we'd love having folks join our committee. They do some incredible work. With that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, for the Planning Commission, we'd like to add Mr. Darren Holcomb.
All right. Action is to appoint two commissioners. Do we have a second for this slate? It'll be July eighteenth. They need quorum. Yes, sir.
When's the next meeting, Mr. Mayor?
We kicked this can down July eighteenth.
Their next meeting is July eighteen?
Our next meeting. I don't know when their next, uh, Ms. Hampton, do you know when their next meeting is by chance? I'm sorry to...
We've already met in June, but we'll meet second week of...
Second week in July. So, we need, second week in July is their meeting. So, we need to go ahead and, and...
Councilman Brown and I would like to also...
It may or may not be after you present, but if you've got someone, it'd be great.
We'd like to recommend, in addition to Mr. Holcomb, Lily Coveney. So, she, this applicant is in commercial construction and engineering. She's also a woman in this field, which is, you know, an underrepresented, I think, population. She is a resident of District Three and talks a lot about working to contribute to sustainable growth and development in Columbia, and the fact that she came back to Columbia because she wants to see it grow after she went to school.
My only confirmation would be Council District, it says five. We can confirm it's District Three and confirm address. That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor, what's the current makeup as far as district representatives on the Planning Commission? That's the only thing I would like to know.
Should...
If Ms. Hampton or somebody's staff has that information. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you, Councilman, you were asking about the overall district representation for Planning Commission?
Of the Planning Commission, which is five members, I believe, correct?
Which is?
Five members on the Planning Commission.
Currently, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. So, each, so the, each board and commission can have up to eleven members. Currently, they have the two vacancies you just appointed, Darren Holcomb and Lily. So, that is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. It's eight.
It's nine total.
That's nine in total.
Gotcha.
I think Mr. Bailey's question was the makeup, how many female, how many, the district breakdown.
That's correct.
Okay. I can ask, I can request that because whenever they send over the charts, it just shows the members and the terms, or we can just look it up on GIS, but it's listed for the people that were just appointed.
If it, so Planning Commission will meet after your next meeting. Now, obviously, it'll only give them probably two days, but...
Let's, let's hold that.
Hold both?
No, I mean, I think everybody's fine with Darren. I think we'll hold the last one until the next meeting. So, can I have a new motion?
I'd like to amend my motion and just put forward Mr. Darren Holcomb.
Thank you.
Second.
So, we got a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Mr. Bailey?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Dr. Bustles?
Aye.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mayor Rickaman?
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if you all have any city council committee reports, referrals, or new business, they can be entertained at this time.
Counsel? Anybody with any referrals? I think everybody's starting to get into holiday mood already after the long couple of weeks. No reports, no referrals?
I do, um, no, we have a few for public input. Okay. Public input, individuals are allotted up to three minutes to address city council. Items requiring a public hearing cannot be addressed at this time.
We have a gentleman coming up.
Well, first, we have Mr. Javard Juarez signed up to speak.
I think he's gone.
Okay.
Well, if he comes back, is there anybody else?
Yes, Mr. Lee Carroll with Save Our Kids would be next.
Good afternoon, Mayor.
Good afternoon, sir.
My name is Lee Carroll, and I'm an ex-law enforcement, ex-military, and I hold a degree in Homeland Security, Mass. Homeland Security. And I've been all over the world. And I was sitting at home looking at YouTube, and I saw something about curfew. And I, when I was in Saks Home in public housing, they tried a curfew. Didn't work. We need more resources, and we need more resources for kids. And we need a committee for kids, for you, because right now, we don't have it. And I look at your budget, there's nothing left for you.
Yeah, there is.
It is?
Yes, sir. There's a lot of money.
I must went blind. Being sixty-five, probably went blind to that one, but...
You're not blind. You just, it's, most of all, the program is indifferent, but we'll share that information with you.
And the Double Dutch at King Park, that young lady's doing excellent with those kids. And I wish we'd give her more resources for her, especially for her budget, because she need a budget. And I do appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you for, thank you for saying that, Mr. Carroll. It's very important for us to get that type of feedback.
Yes, sir.
Has the young lady put together a budget for Double Dutch?
I think she has. Because I know y'all gave her some funding the last time she went to, I think, Florida.
Yeah, it's been a little while ago.
Right, right.
But is there a budget in place?
I can ask her.
Would you please?
Okay.
I think it's funded by the Reverend Ed McDowell, the local trust fund.
Once I did that.
Okay.
But I want, I want to make sure that we can get that, if that's not in the budget, that we can put it in the budget, or at least have a glimpse, a glimpse of it as a council.
Okay, I get with that brother Carl, Mr. Simon over there, and we'll go from there.
Have we, have we, have we presented anything from Double Dutch referencing a budget? Because I'm not, I don't, I've never seen one.
Yes, sir. We typically accommodate her in our, in our budget. And, yeah, we'll, we'll take care of it. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carroll, I would just like to thank you for your commitment. Obviously, you're passionate about caring for youth and youth safety and making sure, you know, they grow up, live healthy, successful lives. And I'm the one who made that referral to the Public Safety Committee. And I think this entire council is always looking at ways we can improve the general health and safety and welfare of the constituents and citizens of Columbia. And we're very methodical through our committee level in hearing feedback, like the feedback you offered, and all stakeholder inputs. So, I appreciate your, your comments, and I believe it'll be considered by the Public Safety Committee as they look into this issue further, to see if it's something that could help the city out, especially during the summer, or if they come to the conclusion that it won't. But it won't be a decision that's made unilaterally or without a real thought and process to the, considering it.
Any further discussion? Thank you. Madam Clerk?
At this time, we have Mr. Lyman Gibbs.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Great, great, fantastic. I just had some concerns about a situation that happened at my residence.
Yes, sir.
It happened in November the fourth of twenty twenty-three. A water pipe burst on my second floor of my residence. At that time, the city police department and also the fire department came out to my house, turned off the water. And I appreciate that because I was at work. Well, I called in the plumber. The plumber, of course, fixed the leak. I told him about, he asked me, did I have anything that happened in my water recently? I said, yeah, dirt came out of my water pipe when I was taking a bath. And then, of course, outside, you have an infrastructure company that's replacing the sewer lines. Well, they also damaged, broke the water pipe. And when they broke that water pipe, that's how that dirt got in there. I've been at that residence now about nineteen years. I never had any problems. Also contacted State Agency, and then I told them the situation. They asked me, well, did they come to you and tell you that they broke the pipe? And I said, no. Well, they suppose they told me they broke the pipe because now the dirt is also now in my drinking water. Also, my house wasn't the only house that was affected. There was another house who also, there is a witness, saw them break the pipe, the water line outside. The water came up, they cut it off. Again, they fixed it. They didn't notify them. Inside their house, they had water problem. Well, in November, on the, about the sixth, I went down to the city, and I told them about it. I also brought the bill from the plumber to verify that that's what happened. I think my water bill went up to like three hundred dollars. So, I appreciate that. They gave me a courtesy of like seventy-two dollars. So, I also told them that I wanted that four hundred dollar bill passed on. I wanted the city to look into that. What happened in November, I figured bureaucracy, the city probably slow. So, I waited about six months.
Don't make that assumption.
That's true, that's true. But I did. Well, I waited about six months, went back down to the water place, and they told me, they threw it away. I asked them, I said, why you threw away my bill? I said, yeah, that's supposed to go to some lady named Penny and claims. And they was like, well, we are not responsible to keep it. But you see, that's like, I don't understand that because, you know, I'm a police officer. If I write a ticket and it said I got my name wrong, well, of course, I'm not going to give it to them. I'll write another one. But that ticket where I wrote that wrong name on, I have to accountable for it because of the fact that they could have thought that maybe I gave the ticket to somebody, they paid me some money, and I put the money in my pocket. So, I have to be accountable for that. And I wanted to know why it's not a chain of command, why they didn't take that bill, send it down there to Penny, instead of throwing it away.
For one, I can't answer that question. And I wish back in the day that somebody had thrown my speeding ticket away by mistake, but I'm, I'm going to do better. Mr. Clint Shealy, the head of utilities, is sitting right there. He's going to get with you and see if he can resolve your problem.
I appreciate. The other, the situation is...
Next time.
Yeah.
Don't wait six months.
Don't wait six months.
If you don't get a response right away, please reach out to one of us.
Well, you, I know, when I called down, I had other problems because of the fact that every time I asked for a supervisor, they would repeat the same information that I gave them. They repeat, I asked, let me speak to a supervisor, and they'll go, well, we don't have to keep your receipt. I asked again, let me speak to a supervisor. They'll say, we don't have to keep your receipt. I called down to the customer care again, asked to speak to a supervisor. No time where they let me speak to a supervisor. They just repeat what I said. Then I also noticed that most of the time, um, now, especially twenty twenty-four, you have a recording that come on and say something like, for customer care, we are monitoring our phone calls, and for quality insurance. That is not on your City of Columbia telephone messages at all. So, how do you guys monitor what's going on with the customers' complaint if there's not being monitored?
Well, I mean, those get recorded, and then complaints come back, and then you go back, listen to it. Somebody's not sitting there listening to it. It's not like a video, you know?
No, I thought, like a message, like a message recording that says, and then, you know, let the person talk. That's not on your, your system at all. Yeah. So, appreciate it. Will do.
Get with Mr. Shealy. He will take care of you, sir. Man, somebody really calling her. Sounds like my alarm.
Hello?
Yeah, that's when you stop on the smoke detector.
Hey, bud.
Lee, Mr. Carroll.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Come here.
I think you just, I think you just tell me.
He was trying to tell you goodbye.
He was trying to tell you bye.
Any other? Oh, more?
Oh, no.
Oh.
That's it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Making motion, we entered an executive discussion, executive discussion of negotiations in the instance proposed contractual arrangements pursuant to SC Code thirty-four-seven-eight-two Convention Center.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing done, seeing